We're going to stop.
Thank you.
If you're a Newark City Councilor, please call the roll.
Mr. Bub?
Here.
Mr. Cost?
Here.
Mr. Fennell?
Here.
Mr. Barker?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Yeah.
Mr. Labutus?
Here.
Mr. Lang?
President.
Mr. Marmy?
President.
Mr. Rath?
Here.
And Mr. Blake?
Here.
We have all here this evening. If you please rise for the information, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Labutus?
Shalit Ray. Heavenly Father, have the coming in prayer this evening. We thank you for the state it's given us. We thank you for the season that we are entering into, a season of peace, joy, and hope. I would just ask you to be with us this evening in all of our discussions and on the legislation that's in front of us, and to help us to keep your vision for our city as we have those discussions. This is the last question, Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Labutus. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's the time for council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda tonight. We have about 10 items, usually Rule 11, if it's okay with Mr. Cost and Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
And we'll be doing those during miscellaneous. Also, Mr. Barker has something for caucus?
Yes, I need to abstain from a vote on 19-38.
19-38. Very good. That would be, actually, I think that would be referred to the committee commission. We have anything else for caucus this evening?
Mr. President.
Mr. Bub?
I will abstain from voting on 19-42 as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bub. Next on the agenda, we have our minutes of our December 2, 2019 meetings. Our motion to approve that. Motion. motion by Mr. Labutus, second by Mr. Barker. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
motion says aye. That passes. Thank you. We have four reports this evening for standing committees, one for finance, one for service, one for capital improvements, and one for personnel. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We have two reports this evening for city officials, one from our auditor, Stephen Johnson, the operating report for the period ending November 30, 2019, and one from Barb Jobs, our city tax administrator, the income tax reports ending November 30, 2019. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Under communications this evening, we have one from Roger Loomis, our water administrator. Properties being sent to lean for past due water sewer and stormwater bills in the amount of $11,160.14. Without objection, those will also be received and filed. Next on the agenda this evening, we have citizens' comments. There are two places for citizens' comments. One is now, and one is after the legislation. This is not a debate with council. This is just your opportunity to be heard. If anyone would like to speak, this is your chance. Please raise your hand, and I will call you up. Anyone like to speak this first section? Okay. Pretty quiet group tonight. Next, we'll order ordinances on the second reading, 19-34.
Ordinance 19-34 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, Mr. Lang, and ordinance setting compensation and stating policy with respect to certain appointed positions of the city of Newark, Ohio, repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict.
You've heard the second reading, 19-34, as you wish.
Mr. President.
Mr. Bub?
I'll move to adopt ordinance 19-34.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bub. Second. Second by Mr. Rath. Is there any discussion on 19-34?
Mr. President.
Mr. Barker?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I think that anytime we discuss the salary of these appointed positions, it's, you know, the question comes up of when it's a good time and when it's a bad time to do so. I guess my concern here is related to actually thoroughly understanding if the positions themselves are compensated and if we've received enough information to understand if they're compensated comparably to other similar municipalities. I would have liked to have seen before us some type of recommendation that included some type of outside source. You know, for example, we have a wonderful chamber of commerce in our community, which has an HR component to that, to the chamber, and it would have been nice to have seen some type of recommendation from some human resource individuals to come with these recommendations. But I just wanted to state that, you know, I'll be voting no on this, but I just feel like there could have been some more thorough discussion as to the process, as to coming to the recommendation. And with that, I'll go.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Thank you. I am going to be offering an amendment for these appointed positions. And there's a couple of different parts to the amendment. One of them is to the percentage, percentages that are granted, and most of them are the first year, as far as the different appointed positions. As far as the assistant law director positions, that will be an increase of 6% and then 4% for three years, and then 3% for an additional four years. So, all of those will be, the assistant law directors will be that. In addition, the deputy auditor, the service director, the safety director, HR director in development, economic development director, will be 4% across the board for the first four years, and then 3% across the board for the following four years. And I think that's all the appointed positions. So, the reasoning and rationale is that the positions were, it was argued that the positions were such that there needed to be a makeup. I've been on this council for a number of years, and always before it was, the reason why the pay raises were not given to certain elected and appointed officials was, we need to set an example because, you know, the salaries are commensurate with the position and the benefits are rich. So, therefore, I don't think that we owe back, to go back and make adjustments to, to end the positions. The law directors, assistant law directors, that, the 6%, the difference there, the position actually looking at the comparisons in order to hire and maintain that, plus the chances and the insecurity of all the different other outside municipalities that we produce additional revenue is not guaranteed. So, therefore, that was justification, and I personally was sold on the fact that that did need to be bumped up a little bit on that. We're trying to be more consistent with what the unions, you know, may possibly get this year, and also with the county also receive, and looking at not only the public sector but the private sector and different pay raises, just thought that the other ones were a little bit high. So, therefore, that is my proposed amendment.
Mr. Marmy, can I, can I ask, if I got this correct? Assistant law directors for the first four years, 6%, 4, 4, and 4.
Right.
And then the next four years, 3, 3, 3, 3.
Correct.
And then the deputy auditor, was that 4, 4, 4, 4, 3, 3, 3, 3?
Correct.
And all the? And all the rest of?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I also have copies of everything that I just stated, plus more of those, the additional on there.
While everybody's getting their chart there, is there any other discussion on the amendment? We'll give you a minute to take a look at that first. Again, make sure I understand, assistant law director, 6, 4, 4, 4, then 4, 3s?
It's just one page, front and back.
Then everyone else, 4, 4, 4, 4, 3, 3, 3, 3?
Correct.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? Anyone like another minute, or? Mr. Cost?
I had stated originally that I would in full support of the raises as they were written. I am going to continue to support the raises as they were written. It's been eight years for these people, and I think they are entitled. I think the raises were deserved.
Thank you, Mr. Cost. Anyone else? Ms. Hall?
Yes, thank you. I agree that the raises would stay the way they were originally.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Okay. Hold up. Please call the roll. Vote. We're going to vote on the amendment.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
No.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
No.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
No.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
No.
The amendment passes 6 to 4. So, now we'll move on to 19-34 as amended. Is there any discussion on 19-34 as amended?
Mr. President.
Mr. Fennell?
I mean, one thing I would like to state, and I think this particular piece has given me a lot of, a lot of thought, and that I know that it is a difficult thing to talk about raises at any time. And there is no good time to talk about a raise, but I do believe that there are better and worse times to talk about it. And I really find that it is unfortunate that the timing of this coming up. I do believe that people who are doing a great job for our city deserve a raise, but the timing of this is really unfortunate to me, and I think that it does not instill within the public a lot of faith in how we, how we look at this process. So, I just wanted to voice that.
Thank you, Mr. Fennell. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to vote on 19-34 as amended. All of us, call the roll.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
No.
19-34 as amended passes 9 to 1. Next on the second reading, we move on to 19-34.
Ordinance 19-35 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, Mr. Lang, and ordinance setting compensation with respect to certain elected officials of the city of Newark, Ohio, and repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith.
You've heard the second reading of 19-35. What does you wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Bub?
I'll move to adopt ordinance 19-35.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bub.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 19-35?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I'm going to offer an amendment for this. It's going to be for the mayor and law director, 4% for the next four years, and then 3% for the next four years after that. The auditor will be, my amendment will be, 7% for the first year, 4% for three years, and then 3% for four years. In researching this and looking at things, the position of the auditor is, need, did need an adjustment, and has nothing to do with, you know, our auditor has done a fantastic job, but it's not a merit type of a raise. It's the position itself needed an adjustment in accordance to where it fit with all the other elected officials. So, therefore, I can justify the fact that there, there was an adjustment needed there. So, that's why the difference as far as the adjustment of the 7%. So, that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rath. Just to restate the amendment, we have the mayor and law director at 4, 4, 4, 4 for the next four years, and then 3, 3, 3, 3 for the following four. And we have the auditor at 7, 4, 4, 4, 3, 3, 3, 3, and the treasurer stays the same.
Yeah, except add the treasurer, the second four years, 3s across the board.
Okay. Treasurer starting in 2022, because he doesn't get to say until then.
Oh, that's right. So, no, just keep the treasurer the way it is.
Keep the treasurer the way it is. All right. There's a motion to amend in a second reading discussion on the amendment.
Second was Rath.
Mr. Rath?
Yeah, just a question for Mr. Marmy. Why wouldn't we extend it out for an eight-year period for the treasurer as well, even though there's not starting for another two years because of his, because of the election cycle for that position?
Can I answer that? The only reason I say that is because the auditor is currently in here. The treasurer's salary is set for six years. If you were going to do that and extend it further, you'd have to extend it out to 10 years, because the treasurer's not on the same cycle as the mayor and the law director and the auditor. So, we've got two years remaining in the cycle. Four years are set in this legislation. So, it's set for six years out as it is. If you're going to extend it, you'd have to extend it to 10 years.
Yeah.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to discuss the amendment? Mr. Cost?
I'm going to repeat myself again. I committed to the raises as they were written. I think they're, they're fair. I think they deserve the raises, and I will continue to support them the way they're written.
Thank you, Mr. Cost. Mr. Lang, you're set? Yep. All of us, call the roll, vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
No.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
No.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
No.
19-35 as amended is 7 to 3, so it has been amended. Any other discussion on 19-35 as amended? Seeing none, all of us, call the roll, vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
No.
19-35 as amended passes 9 to 1. Next on the second reading, we go on to 19-36.
Resolu-, or, excuse me, ordinance 19-36 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, Mr. Marmy, Mr. Lang, and ordinance vacating a 12-foot-wide alley as shown on the plat of the Joseph Kaufman second edition, as recorded in Flat Book 1, page 87 of the Licking County flat records. Said alley is located between 196 and 212 South Fifth Street.
You've heard the second reading of 19-36. What does you wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Fennell?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 19-36.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Fennell?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barker. Is there any discussion on 19-36? Seeing none, all of us, call the roll, vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
19-36 passes 10-0. Now we move on to ordinances on the first reading, 19-37.
Ordinance 19-37 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 905 Hollander Street, city of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of GO, general office district, to MFR, multifamily residence district zoning code of the city of Newark, Ohio.
19-37 will be referred to the planning commission, and then we'll come back to council. Next, we have 19-38.
Ordinance 19-38 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmy, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property generally described as 595 Thornwood Drive, city of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, from that of GB, general business district, GI, general industrial district, GO, general office district, MFC, multifamily condo district, and MFR, multifamily resident districts, as shown on the attached Exhibit A, to GI, general industrial district zoning code of the city of Newark, Ohio, in its entirety and declaring an emergency.
19-38 will also be referred to the planning commission to come back for council. That's also the one Mr. Barker is standing on, so if you could make a note of that. Next. Next, we move on to 19-39.
Ordinance 19-39 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, and Ms. Lang, and ordinance to make an appropriation for the expenditures of the city of Newark, Ohio during the year ending December 31, 2020. And this is the general fund.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on ordinance 19-39.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. If we want our government to be open on January 1, we need to expedite this.
Can we think about that?
I'm in. You're included in that.
The two-day, the two-day reading rule is not debatable. All of us, please call the roll.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt ordinance 19-39.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. Is there any other discussion on 19-39? All of us, call the roll, vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
General fund portion of the budget passes 10-0. Next, we have 19-40.
Ordinance 19-40 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, Mr. Lang, and ordinance to make an appropriation for the expenditures of the city of Newark, Ohio during the year ending December 31, 2020. And this is for the all other fund budgets.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on ordinance 19-40.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Labutus. Mr. Marmy?
I want Mr. Loomis to be able to work on January 1.
Well, that sounds like a good idea. All of us, call the roll, vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt ordinance 19-40.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Labutus. Is there any other discussion on 19-40? Seeing none, all of us, call the roll, vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
19-40 passes 10-0. Next on the first reading, we have 19-41.
Ordinance 19-41 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance to make an appropriation for the expenditures of the city of Newark, Ohio during the year ending December 31, 2020. And this is the grant fund.
19-41 is on, Mr. Marmy?
Mr. President, thank you. Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on ordinance 19-41.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Labutus. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the final piece of the budget, so then we can be operated on January 1.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. All of us, please call the roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt ordinance 19-41.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Labutus. Is there any other discussion on 19-41, the grant section? Seeing none, all of us, please call the roll, vote.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
19-41 passes 10-0. And that takes care of the budget. Next, we have 19-42 on the first reading.
Ordinance 19-42 by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance amending the position classification, pay range, and position authorization tables of the city of Newark by creating the position of administrative assistant within the Department of Mayor.
19-42.
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on ordinance 19-42.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmy on 19-42?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. We need to expedite this to get the position filled and get this taken care of before the end of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Marmy. All of us, please call the roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Bub?
Abstain.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marney?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
We have nine fourths, one abstained. Mr. Marney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt ordinance 19-42.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lang. Is there any discussion on 19-42?
Mr. President.
Mr. Sassen.
If I could clarify a change that I recommended today. If you were attentive enough, you would have noticed that the legislation creates this position within the statement of policy for management and supervisory exempt personnel. Attached to the legislation was a job description. And in that affiliation section of the job description, it had listed the wrong statement of policy for that position. The job description has been changed to reflect what the legislation says. And that is that the physician will be subject to the statement of policy for management and supervisory exempt. I felt this was not a change to the legislation. It was a minor change to the job description. And I felt that it would be appropriate to make that change without having to go through the amendment process. But I wanted council to know that that job description has been changed to accurately reflect what the legislation says.
Thank you, Dr. Sassen. So the job description now matches the legislation which you had.
Correct.
Any other comments on 19-42? Seeing none, autants, call the roll vote.
Mr. LeBoutis?
Upstate.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marney?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
We have nine yes and one exception. 19-42 passes. Now we'll go on to resolutions on the second reading, 19-81.
Resolution 19-81 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marney, and Mr. Lang, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service of the city of Newark, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into contract for polymer for use in wastewater treatment processes.
Easy for you to say. I prefer to second reading of 19-81. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff.
Like to make a motion to adopt 19-81.
Motion by Mr. Raff. Second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 19-81? Seeing none, autants, call the roll vote.
Mr. LeBoutis?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marney?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
19-81 passes 10-0. Next on the second reading, we have 19-84.
Resolution 19-84 by Mr. Marney, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, and Mr. Lang, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of municipal corporation.
I prefer to second reading of 19-84. What does your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marney.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 19-84.
Motion by Mr. Marney.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on 19-84? Seeing none, autants, call the roll vote.
Mr. LeBoutis?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marney?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Marney.
Thank you, Mr. President. A lot of these things, we just need to get the funds in their appropriate categories for the end of the year. And then there's a couple of things that we have to pay and get taken care of before the end of the fiscal year. So this needs to be expedited.
Thank you, Mr. Marney. Autants, please call the roll. Waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. LeBoutis?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marney?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Marney.
Thank you, Mr. President. A lot of these things, we just need to get the funds in their appropriate categories for the end of the year. And then there's a couple of things that we have to pay and get taken care of before the end of the fiscal year. So this needs to be expedited.
Thank you, Mr. Marney. Autants, please call the roll. Waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. LeBoutis?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marney?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
19-85 passes 10-0. Next on the first reading, we have 19-86.
Resolution 19-86 by Mr. Marney, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, and Mr. Lang, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
19-86...
Mr. President.
Mr. Lang.
Would you like to make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule in resolution 19-86?
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Lang.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barker. Mr. Lang.
Yeah, thank you. Similar to 19-85, this is some accounting procedures that we need to go through by the end of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Autants, please call the roll. Waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. LeBoutis?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marney?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Lang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 19-86.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Lang. Second by Mr. Barker. Is there any other discussion on 19-86? Seeing none, autants, call the roll vote.
Mr. LeBoutis?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marney?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
19-86 passes 10-0. And finally, on the first reading, we have 19-87. Almost finally on the first reading, we have 19-87.
19-87 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marney, and Mr. Lang, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service of the city of Newark, Ohio to accept bids and enter into contracts subject to the appropriation of funds for construction of the Fourth Street Separation Project.
19-87.
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff.
Like to make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Raff.
Second.
Second by Mr. LeBoutis. Mr. Raff.
Mr. President, we need to expedite this in order to get the process going on this project.
Thank you, Mr. Raff.
These deadlines.
Autants, call the roll. Waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. LeBoutis?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marney?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule has been waived. Mr. Raff.
Make a motion to adopt as amended.
Motion to...
Not as amended. Adopt.
Motion to adopt 19-87 as read. Second by Mr. LeBoutis. Is there any other discussion on 19-87? Seeing none, autants, call the roll vote.
Mr. LeBoutis?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marney?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
19-87 passes 10-0. And finally, we have 19-88.
Resolution 19-88 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marney, Mr. Lang, a resolution authorizing and directing the Director of Public Service of the city of Newark, Ohio to accept bids and enter into contracts subject to the appropriation of funds for construction of the Tamrac Transmission Line Project.
19-88 will be held for three weeks. Three weeks for our first meeting in January 2020, January 6. And that concludes the legislation. Thanks for your attention. We have a lot of waiving the two-day reading rules except for this evening. More than normal, just to try to get things done by the end of the year. So thanks for your patience. Next, we have your second opportunity for comments from citizens. Again, this is on behalf of council. This is just your opportunity to be heard. If we have anyone who would like to speak, please raise your hand, and I'll have you come on up. This is Kennedy.
Irene Kennedy, 867 Shelburne Place. Greetings to all of you. I'm here to thank Bill Cost for eight years of service to the council and to the city. I was able to step down because I knew somebody good was going to step in and run in my place. So I want to thank you, and I appreciate all the work that you've done for eight years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is the last section. Please raise your hand, ma'am. Anyone else? Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Give us your name and address for the record.
Rochelle Volins, Matt, 237 Violet Court. Well, happy holidays. And I hope yours is warm and cozy and surrounded by loved ones during the season. Now, the reason I'm speaking is a number of news medias have been covering the Boise, Idaho situation where the Ninth District, Federal District Court decide that it is unconstitutional to ticket or jail homeless persons for living out in the streets when shelter is unavailable. The Ninth Federal District, Federal Court ruled that this constituted cruel and unusual punishment and violated their constitutional rights to camp. The Supreme Court has declined to hear the appeal, allowing the Ninth District's decision to stand. I feel that this applies to Newark also. We are not able to resolve this growing problem overnight. However, I feel that the least we can do is open up buildings, including saving buildings and otherwise, to homeless persons at freezing temperatures. And that doesn't mean 10 degrees. It means nothing less than 32 or above. And stop destructing makeshift structures simply because of the aesthetics. It is cruel to penalize poverty. I'm sorry. In encountering and serving this particular population, I've met mothers and fathers and grandparents and veterans and children and young adults whose problems started with an accident or a home catching on fire, health issues, layoffs, jobless situations, stagnant wages, and more. Freezing cold, it's known by the medical community to be potentially a killer to the heart, figuratively and non-figuratively. This can happen to anyone regardless of their economic status. And I'm sorry. Anyway, let's help the disadvantaged and not criminalize them. Consider, please, readdressing the issue of temperature, especially during the growing crisis, to at least actual freezing temperature or even above. It's dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Any city officials this evening? Mr. Rhodes.
My comments tonight go to Councilman Cost. Bill, it's been a pleasure to work with you the past eight years. I've known you probably 35-plus years. You've always been a man of your word and done what you said you were going to do. And I just want to wish you and your family well.
David, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our award-winning honoror, Mr. Johnson.
I also would like to thank Bill for his service to both the city and to the citizens. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I wish you well.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Our honorable director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would thank Mr. Cost for his service to the city. But I would prefer to thank him for helping put food on the Sassen family table every year when Clemson finishes above his beloved Ohio State Buckeyes. And I look forward to the next meeting when he comes back as a citizen with another dollar fund. It has been fun working with Bill. And I don't think we've seen the last of you. And just one last time. Go Tuck.
Your out order.
Before I address that, this past Saturday was Wreaths Across America. And so a couple years ago, the numbers were 700,000 wreaths in 1,000 locations across America. We're very fortunate that it was done right here at Cedar Hill Cemetery. And I surely want to thank our local Civil Air Patrol that we have good ties with, the Newark Elks, and of course, our Parks and Cemetery Department. We were out there Saturday morning in the rain with a lot of volunteers. And they laid probably 600 wreaths, which they raised an enormous amount of money to do that. And it's on all the graves of all the veterans in the new portion and as much as we can do in the older portion. And it is fitting and respectful in so many ways. Remember, honor, and teach is really the point of the entire process. You know, one is laid at every grave at the National Cemetery of Washington, which is quite phenomenal. And they are there for a while. If you have time to go by and drive through Cedar Hill, it's on the back side where the veterans are laid to rest in that part. And of course, the old civil part at the top in the front. And it is really touching in many ways. But I want to thank everybody that took a part in that and does each year. And with that, Mr. Cost, it has been truly a pleasure. And I will echo everything everyone else has said. You work hard, and you kind of have some fun with it, too. And that's kind of a nice thing in many ways. And you will be sadly missed, but again, probably won't see the last of you. And I know you're going to stay actively involved in the city here. So thank you, Bill. Appreciate you very much so.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. LeBoutis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do wish you the best, Bill. Enjoyed working with you the last eight years and certainly wish you the best. You're always very fair and objective. And best wishes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Fennell?
I guess I'd also like to thank Bill for his leadership and for his eight years of service on city council. And I also agree, I don't think we've seen the last of Mr. Bill Cost here. So thank you again. Also, I would like to wish everybody a happy holidays and safe holiday and a safe and happy new year coming up here. Rochelle, thank you so much for continuing to bring forth the issue of homelessness. People experiencing homelessness in our community. I think it's important that we continue to think of them, especially as we are seeing them warm in our homes, realizing how fortunate we are, and making sure that when the need arises, that we are able to meet that call. So thank you. I thought I would.
Thank you, Mr. Fennell. Mr. Barker?
Yes, I would also echo my thanks to you, Mr. Cost. I remember meeting you when I was probably 10 years old at the middle school, taking pictures of me in an athletic complex there. And you have done great things for the citizens of Newark. And I appreciate as is your service to this community. I also would like to thank Mayor Hall. Last Friday, the mayor participated in the Licking County Chamber of Commerce's Government, Justice, and Law Day for the community leadership class, which I am a part of. He was part of a panel with Congressman Balderson and Senator Hodinger. And thank you, Mayor, for participating in that.
Thank you. It was my pleasure.
That'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. Ms. Hall?
Thank you. I want to thank Bill Cost as well. I've been here six years. And as minority leader, I appreciate your sense of humor at just the right moment and your at just the right moment, and your support and guidance. I really appreciate it. Thank you. I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday and a safe holiday. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Mr. Labutus?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to thank Bill for your service. I've had the opportunity to serve here over the past two years. I know we will see you again, and you'll stay actively involved, and I know you love the city, and that love for the city will continue your service beyond this time. I also want to wish everyone a happy holidays, both Christmas and New Year's. As I said earlier, I hope you can experience the hope and the peace and the joy that comes with the season. With that, I will yield.
Thank you, Mr. Labutus. Mr. Lang?
Mr. President, thank you. Last week, I had the pleasure of attending the first group public meeting for the Licking County Task Force on Homelessness, and I would encourage everybody to keep an eye out, join the Facebook page, keep an ear out for what this group is doing. I think it's going to be a new approach, and I think it's going to be a successful one. Mayor Hall, thank you for joining me there. A couple of my colleagues were there as well. You know, in talking to some of the leaders of different organizations there, there are private dollars available that are currently being invested in Columbus and Franklin County, and the reason those dollars are going there is because they've shown the commitment and the infrastructure so that those private dollars, the folks putting them there, know that they're going to some, to an infrastructure and a system that is going to ultimately address homelessness. And I think if we can show the same kind of commitment here, and I think the task force is a good start, if we can show that kind of commitment here, I think we can start seeing some of those private dollars come our way and start helping us to address the problem. So, I really would encourage everybody to pay attention. There's an online survey where you can provide some feedback on how you see the problem. Mr. Cost, thank you for the last couple of years. It's been an absolute pleasure serving with you. I've really enjoyed, in particular, going to Legend Elementary and speaking to the kids there. I think that's been a lot of fun, and I know we've always joked about who represents who, and you've represented me well as my at-large councilman, but as your fifth ward councilman, I do hope you hang on to my number and please reach out. I know you have plenty of ways to reach out to the city, but all joking aside, it has been a pleasure, and thank you. And then finally, just like to wish everybody happy holidays. With that, I'll yield.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Mr. Marmy, could I ask you to make your Ms. Lang's comments and then finish, and then come back and go to executive session?
Sure.
Would that be okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Marmy?
Okay, first of all, I want to say that we will not be having a finance committee meeting on January sixth, so the first day of the budget, pretty much, or first week of the budget, we should be fine. Next, I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. 'Tis the season, and I hope that everybody has a safe and happy time during the holidays. And finally, Mr. Cost, Bill, I appreciate what you have done for the city of Newark, for the citizens. I appreciate being able to work with you on a number of things, not only as a large group, but also a lot of things one-on-one, you and I. But what I appreciate the most is the friendship that I've gained from you, and I really do appreciate that.
Thank you, David.
And that'll never go away.
I appreciate that.
And so, thank you very much for all that you've done. It's greatly appreciated. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. Mr. Rath?
Thank you. Bill, I just wanted to say I appreciate you also as well. I mean, obviously, we've worked together for three years, and I've always appreciated your willingness to work with anybody that wanted to work with you. And like I said, your presence up here will be missed, so we appreciate that. 'Tis the season, so I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, but that's not the only season upon us. I want to say thank you preemptively to our street department and our snow warriors. We had our first big real snow last night. Those guys are out doing a good job. As you all know, snow removal has been one of my pet peeve issues that I've worked on to improve as long as I've been on council, and we'll continue to work on improving it. But those guys do a great job with what they have to work with, and it's a penniless job because not everybody's streets gets plowed, and that's the people they hear about. But they do do a great job for us, so I want to say thank you to the street department for what they've done so far and what they're going to do tonight and for the rest of the season. I'll call a service committee meeting for the sixth. We'll see if that happens, and with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, something we missed tonight was cake, so that means that Bill's service isn't done because we didn't have any cake tonight, so he's going to be around, and he's going to come back and serve, continue serving our city and our citizens, and you know, usually when people end their tenure, we have cake, but we didn't have that tonight, so we expect him to come back. But with a cake, you know, we're cupcakes, whatever. But I as well want to thank you for your service, Bill. Thank you for your dedication to the people of Newark and to the citizens, and always expressing yourself and staying loyal to your views, and so, thank you for your eight years of service to Newark. Thank you. With that, I'll yield.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. And Mr. Cost, I've probably known you longer than anybody else up here, so I think it's been, I won't even say how long it's been, but it's been a long time.
Long time.
Yeah, but I'd just say the last eight years, you've just done a great job on council. I think you've been very thoughtful, and you've been well-prepared. You've always pit the citizens of Newark first, which I've appreciated. I'll have a few less bruises on my leg without you kicking me under the table to use the gavel to gabble to somebody, so I will feel a little better about that. I certainly will miss you, and I hope you keep involved. And with that, Mr. Cost.
First of all, I'd like to thank my wife for being here this evening. Not only has she listened to this for the last eight years, she's put up with me for the last forty years, and that's to be commended. I also would like to thank some really good friends here tonight, the Kennedys and my buddy Keith Alexander. It's those kind of friends that I like, though. The first word that comes to my mind is grateful. I am so grateful to the citizens of Newark for allowing me to serve as a member of your Newark City Council. That's a phrase you always used. I admired that. Your Newark City Council. It's been an absolute honor and a privilege to be here, and it's been very special. The second word I've got is thankful. I'm thankful to have served with all of you. It's been very special. I got a list to read to you, though. There's been a few other folks that have passed through here in the last eight years. Ed Hottashell, Shirley Stair, Rhonda Loomis, Alex Rovetta, Mike Mangus, Clerk of Courts Diana Huffman, Mark Guthrie, Duke Frost, Curtis Johnson, Mark Frazier, and one of my favorites, Carol Floyd. And so, those folks, that's a lot of people to pass through here in that number of years, and they've all been special, just like you all have. I'm very proud of what we've done. I'm very proud of the service. I'm very proud of what we've done as a group, and I wouldn't have missed a minute of it. It's been a great experience. The third word I've got is hopeful. I'm hopeful that you all continue to do the things that we've been working on for all these years. It's really hard to leave here with unfinished business. For me, that's transit, homelessness, low-income housing, drug addiction, and a downtown grocery store. I might even mention that a couple of times in the audience from now on, but those are the things that I feel are unfinished business, and I want to stick around and see those things dealt with. Do not get rid of my name tag. I have full intention of running again. I have full intention of serving again, so I don't want to have to have you make a new one. I'd like to use the same one again. We'll just keep it in storage. We'll keep that. And I want to thank you all very much, and I'll wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Well, now, we've got to get back to a little bit of legislation, and we're probably, after the first piece, going to have to go into executive session, so we're probably going to have to clear the room, but, Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to invoke Rule eleven and have Resolution nineteen eighty-nine read.
Resolution nineteen dash eighty-nine by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Lang. A resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to execute a contract for reimbursement of legal representation of intended persons for calendar year twenty twenty with the Licking County Board of Commissioners for the City of Newark, Licking County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Nineteen dash eighty-nine is emergency. What does you wish?
Mr. President, Mr. Marmy, make a motion to adopt Resolution nineteen dash eighty-nine, which is adopted by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Cost.
Is there any discussion on nineteen dash eighty-nine? Seeing none, please call a roll vote.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Nineteen dash eighty-nine passes ten zero. Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Barker. All in favor, seeing the body saying aye. I'm going to go into executive session because we're going to talk about the contracts with the police and the fire, et cetera. So, I hate to ask this, but we're going to have to clear the room except for the staff, the directors, and Mr. Harris.
I make a motion to come out of executive session.
Sorry? Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Rath. Come out of executive session. All in favor, seeing the body saying aye. All opposed? During executive session, there were no decisions made. It was just a discussion about employment contracts. On, we're going to go on to nineteen dash forty-six.
Ordinance nineteen dash forty-six A by Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, Mr. Marmy, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance approving, accepting, ratifying, and adopting an employment agreement between the City of Newark, Ohio and ASME Local two ninety-six, two twenty-nine sixty-three and Ohio Council A, AFL dash CIO, providing for the application of all terms, conditions, and benefits of said agreement effective January one, twenty twenty, repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict with the provisions of said employment agreements and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the reading of nineteen dash forty-six. It is emergency. What does you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution nineteen dash forty-six.
Motion adopted by Mr. Marmy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lang. Is there any discussion on nineteen dash forty-six? Seeing none, please call a roll vote.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Nineteen forty-six A passes ten zero. Next, we're going to nineteen forty-six B, which is the opposite of A.
Ordinance nineteen dash forty-six B by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance rejecting the employment agreement between the City of Newark, Ohio and ASME Local twenty-nine sixty-three and Ohio Council A, AFL dash CIO, providing for the application of all terms, conditions, and benefits of said agreement and declaring an emergency.
Nineteen forty-six B is emergency. Is there a motion to adopt? Nineteen forty-six B will fail for no motion to adopt. Now, we'll go on to nineteen dash forty-seven A.
Ordinance nineteen dash forty-seven A by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance providing, or excuse me, approving, accepting, ratifying, and adopting an employment agreement between the City of Newark, Ohio and Fraternal Order of Police, Local one twenty-seven Blue and Gold Units, providing for the application of all terms, conditions, and benefits of said employment agreements and declaring an emergency.
Nineteen dash forty-seven A is on the first reading. It is emergency. What does you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution nineteen dash forty-seven A.
Motion adopted by Mr. Marmy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cost. Is there any discussion on nineteen dash forty-seven A? Seeing none, please call a roll vote.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Nineteen forty-eight A passes ten zero. Next, nineteen forty-seven B, same as we talked about with nineteen forty-six B.
Ordinance nineteen dash forty-seven B by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance rejecting the employment agreement between the City of Newark, Ohio and Fraternal Order of Police, Local one twenty-seven Blue and Gold Units, providing for the application of all terms, conditions, and benefits of said agreement for January one, twenty twenty, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to adopt nineteen forty-seven B? Seeing none, that fails for no motion. Now, we go on to nineteen dash forty-eight A.
Ordinance nineteen dash forty-eight A by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance approving, accepting, ratifying, and adopting an employment agreement between the City of Newark, Ohio and the International Association of Firefighters, Local one oh nine, providing for the application of all terms, conditions, and benefits of said agreement, repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict with the provisions of said employment agreement and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the reading of nineteen dash forty-eight A. It is emergency. What does you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution nineteen dash forty-eight A.
Motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Barker. Is there any discussion on nineteen forty-eight A? Seeing none, please call a roll vote.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Nineteen forty-eight A passes ten zero. And now, we have nineteen forty-eight B.
Ordinance nineteen dash forty-eight B by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance rejecting the employment agreement between the City of Newark, Ohio and the International Association of Firefighters, Local one oh nine, providing for the application of all terms, conditions, and benefits of said agreement and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to adopt nineteen forty-eight B? Seeing none, that fails. Next, we go on to nineteen dash forty-nine.
Ordinance nineteen dash forty-nine by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance setting compensation and stating policy with respect to administrative, technical-exempt employees of the City of Newark, Ohio, repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict with the ordinance and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the reading of nineteen dash forty-nine. It is emergency. What does you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution nineteen dash forty-nine.
Motion by Mr. Marmy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barker. Any discussion on nineteen dash forty-nine? Seeing none, please call a roll vote.
Mr. Buck?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
And Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Nineteen forty-nine passes ten zero. Next, we have nineteen dash fifty.
Ordinance nineteen dash fifty by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, and Mr. Lang, and ordinance setting compensation and stating policy with respect to management and supervisory employees of the City of Newark, Ohio, repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict with this ordinance and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the reading of nineteen dash fifty. It is emergency. What does you wish?
Mr. President?
Mr. Marmy?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution nineteen dash fifty.
Motion by Mr. Marmy.